He's gonna put us on air. Alright, we are now on air. Thank you, everybody. I am going to welcome everybody to this MSAD 15 School Board Business Meeting. Thank you all for coming. I'm gonna call this meeting to order and declare a quorum. Looks like we're only missing one of us, that's plenty of voters. So, I do want to start this meeting with a moment of silence for Steve Zimmerman. He is, or was, I'm sorry to say, our Memorial School Custodian that was taken from us too soon in the past week. So please join me for a moment of silence in his memory. Thank you very much, and our thoughts go out to his family and everybody who knew him at Memorial. Always feel it very deeply when I lose anybody in our community, so terrible thing to have happen. But if you can now join me in the pledge of allegiance, we'll get this meeting started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Okay, upcoming meetings. We've got a busy schedule coming up as we finish up our school year. On April 10th, we have Personnel and Finance Committee meetings at 5:30 and 6:30 respectively in the Central Office. And we are gonna be working in the Finance Committee on finalizing a budget proposal. On April 24th, we'll have a Policy Committee meeting at 5:30 and then a School Board Business meeting at 6:30 PM at the New Gloucester Meeting House. And that is going to be appointment viewing as we will have our final discussion on the budget and vote it forward in one shape or another so that we can prepare the warrants with the vote in our May Business Meeting. Okay. Any additions or adjustments to the agenda? Alright, seeing none. Oh?
The robotics team is not gonna be here today, they're gonna come next month.
I heard that, do you think we need to adjust the agenda for that? Alright, well, I'll postpone it, I'll table it when we get there. Are there any comments from the audience? Looks like we've got an orangutan, does he have anything to say? No, alright, you got your chance, everybody gets three minutes. You sure?
I'm good.
Alright, cool. Alright, can I hear a motion on the minutes from March 6th?
I move we accept as printed the minutes in the March 6th, 2024 regular business meeting.
Second?
I have a comment.
Yep.
In the minutes, there's a thing that says, just a second. It mentions wonderful, or something like that, but there's no reference, who said it, when, or what, right below that.
Alright, I'm in those meetings, can you point me to which agenda item?
Okay, just a minute, I'll get to the agenda. Sorry. School Board package, is it under that? It must be.
Yep, it's in our school board package, yep.
Just let me get to the minutes. I apologize, I should've had that right.
That's alright.
I had it in...
I think it's on page three.
Page three, one, two, three, under which item?
Excursion, excellent report.
Oh, we did have a discussion that says excellent report.
Yeah, that excellent, so there's no reference, yeah, there's no, and then right below that, there's something else.
So I think that those were things that were expressed probably by me, if I were to guess.
Well...
Excellent report with an exclamation point, sounds like me.
But, okay, so it's just standing there, it doesn't have any reference.
Right.
And then right below that, the goal is to have it out in, to vote in August.
Yeah, I think that was also me.
So I think that that's a little misleading, okay?
Right, so can we change just the minutes to reflect that the Chair made both of those statements? Alright. Thank you Fran.
Both items are removed, right, yeah.
Well, I'm just gonna attribute them to me.
Okay.
Alright, any other discussion on the minutes? Alright, good, that's why we go through the exercise, alright, all in favor? opposed? Alright, great, thank you. Wow, that was something right there. I think that was your signal to move into the recognition, Dr. Kane, yeah, with much fanfare.
Okay. School bell.
Okay. Congratulations to the High School Patriot Players who won the Regional Winner Up Title at the Maine Principal Association Class A One Act Play Festival. Special recognition went to Gray New Gloucester students named to the All Festival Cast, Zach Murphy, Lily Colby, Quinn Coro, and Ella Diffen. Awards for Outstanding Costumes and Props went to Sarah Penna, Elizabeth, oh...
Good luck with that name.
Ladarczyk.
Ladarczyk, nice.
And Jay Cookson, Jay Burnout, and Rowan Riley. And that's it for recognition. The High School recently released their top 10% graduates. We're gonna send out something more formal and they will be here next month to see you personally.
Fantastic. Congrats to the Patriot Players, that sounds great. Okay, let's, we don't have any old business on the agenda, let's get into new business. It looks like we will be seeing a student iMovie from Dunn School, 4th grader Beau Immersion. Is that how you say your last name? Good. It's about 3.5 minutes and it involves this orangutan, so now I understand why the orangutan is here, this is fantastic. And let's hear about it, are you gonna introduce it Beau?
Beau, come on.
You gotta come up to the mic. Those are some dope sneakers, too. Alright, so this is Beau Immersion, and thought Beau created a fantastic iMovie using his school technology. And so why don't you tell him about your process, what did you do to make this?
Uh, so we're doing a project about, like, we had to do a report on animals and my teacher gave me a book about orangutans and I had to make do reports on them. So, I thought I could do like a green screen in the background and I had a puppet, so I just thought I would use him for like the report and everything.
Yeah, and did you write the script?
Yeah.
Yeah, so did you perform it?
Yep.
Yep, and who filmed you?
My grandpa filmed me.
Alright. Right on, there we go. Alright, so you ready to show it?
Yep.
Let's see it.
Alright, chicken wings, sides, little lucky doors, blue moon forehead, small red ears, excuse the cheap, you're poor. I'm looking for you, first in the forest. It's a... I was pretty close, I'm scared. Come on, come on, they're... Come back, I'm so excited, they're gonna be all around. The next sentence, I'm sorry, it hit a button, I'm not prepared, I'm ready. My kids are so broken down, so I'm feeling bad, they didn't stop until they saw the end. But because they want to see it, they're trapped. What are you doing? My parents had first, that works, humans, those scared me. See my little chicken mouth on top of my head, I can't handle the process. It keeps my skin dry, I'm bothered. Don't remember what I eat. Alright, three, yeah, I told you, I told you. I'll tell you what I eat, I eat fruit, figs, thorns, mangoes, bark, soil, leaves, insects. Now I'm sorry, dirty, dirty isn't really sticky, you keep on chewing, don't worry, I don't mind it. Right now I can get to the top of the balls and backs. I'm 32, see, see, uh, try to put my toes, do it, get the thumbs up. If I want to pick some of the five flavors, so I can have it made, I'm single, you have to go with me. I love this angel, I'm saying I'm so conflicted, I believe so, I miss my own. Cool, you have, you want, no, I see. Exactly, so you're zip all the mothers, and they lay the bird away, be, bear. And you, and a sprout to the forest, bear is also English, orange. Did you know that, Beau?
No, I see.
When you take yourself to arms inside of a park, you're young, you're about four foot six inches tall. I weigh up to a hundred and seventy-six pounds, I'm the most happy on the screen now. You see how the toilet already takes stone up close, the nature! Everything should have clothes, humans should make them clothes, clothes for us. But I guess they don't care and that makes me sad. Apparently when I'm 14, I bought a huge folding room under my boat and I do make clothes. But I depend and I already commit clothes, see? You realize? A bowl cheek pads at the age of 14. I'm a myth, and I think my rep be different, he has no hair, he has a hairless head, well, you update me. Look so attractive, I mean massive cheeks, looking cheek pads. Right now I'm trying to grow some, because as I said, I'm single and I'm looking for a mate. About 10 years old and I already have identified over 200 pairs. Alright, I think I covered everything about me, don't you think so? Alright, bye kids.
That is fantastic. So it was a little glitchy with the click share, but it was pretty funny, wasn't it? Yeah, it's good stuff. When some of it, you lost some of the dialogue, but it was fantastic. So, did you have fun putting that together?
Yeah.
Yeah, and so we wanted to show that as a great example of how kids even down to Dunn School use their technology to demonstrate what they learn and show all the great work they're doing. And, you know, we're getting ready for that refresh and it's good to see kind of what it is we use these devices for, so. You got anything else to say?
I don't think so.
Nope. Where did you get the, where'd you get the green screen?
Oh, so I just took a piece of green paper and I just used a couple pieces of tape to hang it up on my wall.
Nice, how did you, how did you know that that works?
Uh, so, my tech lab, she has a green screen, so I thought I could just take a piece of paper and hang it up on the wall.
Smart. Yeah, so we have a green screen at Dunn School, but because we filmed it at home, we sent big sheets of green paper home, right?
Did you get it all in one take, or did you piece it together?
Uh, it took me a couple tries, but...
It's good.
That's the hardest thing, man, getting in one take, I'll tell you. Fantastic, any other questions or thoughts for young Beau?
Did a great job.
Thank you.
Nice, thanks for coming in, makes us feel great to see all this awesome work you're doing.
Thanks.
Thank you. Alright, and we will not be offended should you decide to beat the storm and beat feet out of here.
No, thanks for having us.
Thanks for bringing them in, we appreciate it, it's awesome.
He's got clothes.
I just learned a bunch of stuff I didn't know about orangutans as well.
I did know about the Dorian fruit being stinky.
I did know that.
I've been to Singapore, it's very gross, yeah. Alright, the second thing on our agenda is presentation from the High School Robotics Team. They've decided that discretion is the better part of valor and they will bring it to our next meeting just to make sure that they didn't run into any storm problems. So, we have that to look forward to in the May meeting. Alright, let's move on to number three. We have just a little update for the Board on the revolving renovation fund. The bids have been unsealed and looks like Diane is walking up to the podium and is going to tell us about that. Welcome Diane.
Thank you. So, we did have a formal bid opening on March 29th, last Friday. We had one bidder and it was Mechanical Services who bid $9,837,599. They bid it as one package for all five schools. The original applications that were submitted to the state that we applied for were a total of $10,458 for all five schools as well. That's not what, Russell School was not accepted, but, so it was $162,859 less than what the original bid package that was submitted. So, at this point, we have the opportunity to, we have gone back to them and asked them to break it down for us and give it the bids individually by school. So we can decide whether we want to have all the projects done, do fewer projects, break them down however we want to do that. We have the projects broken down from the state of what was approved, what of the loans were forgiven and what amounts are forgiven, what part. There's about $3 million that are forgiven, $3 million, $87,726 that are forgiven of that. Then there's $3,434,719 that are at zero interest rate for 10 years. And then the remainder, we can finance ourselves for 15 years. So if we were to do everything, the remainder would be financed for 15 years. If we did a 3% loan, which is about what it is right now, it'd be about $3,315, $315,274.
That's the remainder if we chose to do all five schools.
Right, including Russell.
And did they break out for you how much Russell was?
No, but the original bid package was about $969,000.
So it's ballpark that.
Yeah, yeah, I have it broken down, if anybody wants to see it in paper, I have all those broken down.
And that was all in our packet?
Right, a while ago.
Last business meeting as well, so we can look up all that as well.
Yeah.
Any clarifying questions on that? Do you want to talk about the, us talking to the Department of Education about an extension for issuing the bonds?
So at this point, we'll, I'm just waiting to talk to them, we can get an extension. The Maine Bond Bank, what I will do is I will apply to the Maine Bond Bank and they will basically sit on the application until we get approval from the voters to move forward. So I will go ahead and start that application next week. I have to have it in by July, you have to have it in within six months of the award. So I will go ahead and do that and work with our bond council at Drummond-Woodsom and get that going for at least the state-approved amount and the forgiven amount. And then yes or no, and then we go forward with whatever that means. So at least we'll have that part done.
Great.
Yeah.
Alright, clarifying questions on this? I'm gonna have a longer discussion on bonds both, so just any clarifying questions on anything that Diane just said about the bid being opened, number of bidders, anything like that? Go ahead Fran.
So how would that bond referendum read? Would it be the $9 million or would it be $3 million?
Everything will be, everything will be totally spelled out, so the whole project, and then it will say exactly how much the state is giving us, how much is forgiven, how much is at zero interest, and then how much would be at what interest rate that we're able to secure through whatever financing source we do. So it will be very clearly transparent to the community and what that, each level will be.
So it'd be clear that they would be pretty much approving $3 million of their own packets?
Well, it's really, it would really be $6,700,000 because even though part of it's zero financing, they're still having to pay, you know, that $6,700,000. Yeah, $3,400,000 is zero financing and then the balance of $3,300,000, we have to pay, we have to pay interest on.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it would definitely be written very clearly at each level.
Well, I'm gonna save my next question for later discussion. Any other questions for Diane on this specific topic? Alright, why don't we move to the next update, which is Penny has an update for us on the larger facilities bond, which we got the report on. We have issued that report to the architects and engineers for some drawings and they have gotten back to Penny with some items. Take the floor Penny.
Okay, so the firm we had already engaged with previously on some early work was invited to pick up essentially where they left off, but with the addition of the report as approved by this body. We did have opportunity to meet and just walk through what that looked like, what the ask was, what the, what that ad hoc committee had come up with. They did come back and ask to meet with some of the district team to answer some questions around what is the use, what is the size, what is the physical footprint at the property that we could even reasonably use? Could we plop a thing here, could we plop a thing there? So extremely early discussions, I did attend that meeting. So they have come back today with, again, we're really, they're really talking about the sort of outer edge of what would the buildings take up, where would we have to put a parking lot? What, you know, what do we want to avoid? There's feedback given such as like the greenhouse is very, had a lot of community involvement, getting that up would not be well received to smash the greenhouse. So these types of things, we have to get back to the bus garage. So just very early conversations of what is even functionally usable? Looking at the big picture around when, what things we know are happening, like or presume or hope are happening, the HVAC, the sidewalk, the new sort of access to the property? And what kind of timelines might be realistic? The, the firm felt that we could be ready with, you know, the earliest we could have everything in front of the, of voters would be a September timeframe. That would be back to school, would avoid the issue of our people away on vacation, could do a lot of education and information with all the back to school nights. So that was met very enthusiastically by some of the staff. How do we intersect with HVAC parking? This is just sketching in broad terms, but if there was HVAC work going on next summer, they could also come in, do all the new, the ground, the parking lots, potentially fields, have that done. And then the following summer, really dig into any additions that were done for an auditorium space or improved gym space. Always looking to get some feedback from user groups, you know, digging into them. Gave some feedback around what size do we really need, what, you know, we're not looking to overdo this, we're not looking for a 900-seat auditorium, we're not looking for two basketball courts side by side. So they're gonna, next steps would be to pull some user groups together to really zero in on those ideas. The current working idea would be an addition for auditorium over where the stage kind of currently is, out back, I say out back, but moving towards the transportation area behind the greenhouse, I'm acting like it's right here, without actually interfering with either of those. Redo's parking out front and then a new basketball, appropriately sized gym, very near where the gym is with new parking, moving the parking over and not destroying any of the usable, nice outdoor space, field space that we, such as the track, that we didn't want to see impacted. So that was the latest conversation today. And also the reality of, you know, that if we go after all of those things, it would be a big, big number.
That is not better than saying what the actual number is, because we all have different ideas for what big means. They gave you a very ballpark number.
A very ballpark number. We also want to look at things like, you know, well I said redoing the parking lots, you know, making sure we, we get in the things that we keep saying, that I keep hearing at meetings, we're gonna leave that for the bond, we're gonna fix that when we do the bond. You know, so getting all of that in, is we're probably looking somewhere in the ballpark of $60 million.
Yeah.
Without actually having zeroed in on any of the, what it really looks like.
I think, I think that's probably, you know, in general, they operate similarly to our expectation management with the budget, which is, you know, if we do all the things at the, you know, big as possible, $60 million is like...
Yeah, this is new gym, fields, performance space, cafeteria, kitchen renovation, parking lots.
Classrooms.
Yeah, bathrooms that are accessible to the outside field space, I mean, this was all of the, you know, these are asking for all of the things.
Everything in the report.
Yeah, and also to, and also continually saying we don't want more than we need. So yes, I think there's a lot of room there, but, you know, we have made it pretty clear we're not looking for a massive build out here.
So did he give you any sort of timeframe in terms of when some drawings might be available for the bond committee and/or user groups to take a look at?
So the plan was to update the Board tonight, have that discussion, and they are ready, standing by to start next steps, getting some folks onto the property, getting, looking at the code review, getting some of their folks in the building, meeting with some user groups very promptly with an idea to get things out to an estimator in the summer, so we could get really firm numbers in time to put things in front of the public. So I mean, so I would say he'd be looking to get in front of user groups and get in the buildings next week, the week after, you know.
Okay, so we're gonna need hard numbers in time to issue the warrants, which have to be issued at least 60 days before a vote, so we would have to have hard numbers by early July.
Yeah, that was the schedule we talked about today.
Great. Alright, so any clarifying questions on those details Penny has presented? Alright, so I would like to enter into discussion- All right, so I would like to enter into discussion because with this information in hand, I see a path forward that I would like to run by people and see if you endorse it. So with the HVAC, we do not have to do that vote in June. We have confirmation from the Department of Education that we can wait to hold that vote in duality with the facilities improvement bond, right? So the question is the timing. We've thrown around some summer dates. Now these architects are saying the engineers really would like it to be in September. I think it makes sense to try to schedule something in the second week, third week of September with the idea that that gives us all summer long to do education, but we're not trying to hold a vote during the summer when, you know, people are on vacation, they're up at camp, they're a little bit distracted. Even if they have been distracted away at camp all summer, we come back, we have our back to school events, we have post Labor Day week or two in order to hold a listening session, hold an education session. September, I think it may. Is there a ghost in the machine? All right, and, you know, we also, you know, people will be back in school. They will be, you know, thinking about the school year. It will give, you know, it's done in time so that we will have the entirety of the school year to prep for the majority of that work that would happen in the summer of '25. Also with that timing and our federal money for the sidewalks and crosswalk and egress, there's a really good chance, I mean, you never know how contractors and that sort of thing works, but a really good chance that we could be doing sidewalks, egress, parking lot, HVAC system, all in the summer of '25, fields, all in the summer of '25. So we have one big disruption in that summer, but things are relatively coordinated. We don't have multiple times when, you know, all the dump trucks are coming in and out. And then, you know, it also seems like there's enough time that, you know, by the fall of '26, we actually, you know, have these things usable and available. It'll be great, it'll be soon as my children are out of the district. Just kidding, that's irrelevant.
Sorry, one piece relevant to that that I didn't say, that that timeline I present, mentioned for September would be our, kind of our best shot at having it two years later. And then anytime after that, he was like, you're, you know, you're really fortunate. Into the next school year, which you have to stop some work potentially and then you're in the next summer.
So that would give us a timeline of, we would have two more business meetings with which to set that date. We would have two more business meetings to discuss things like, you know, what the framework of this bond might look like, you know, in terms of is it all one package? Do we have, you know, pieces of the package? Hopefully we'd have sort of drawings in time from the engineers to know like, okay, well, this gym or this theater or whatever will be a separate piece and we can sort of split those out. And then, you know, kind of similarly, if you remember last June, the last board sort of used that last meeting to vote. This is what we want to make happen and we are sort of instructing the board coming in to kind of iron out the details. This will be us wrapping up, ironing up those, ironing out those details, setting a date for when the vote would happen. And then, you know, the sort of next board would kind of enter in September, that board would, that vote would happen. And then they would have kind of clarity on their work for the year to come. So that's the discussion I would like to have, is a response to that sort of plan for moving forward. Any other questions, thoughts? The floor is now open. Go ahead Fran.
Okay, considering the HVAC, what would be the holdup of having the vote on that bond in June?
So the, so the holdup on that would be, I personally, and that's the reason I present this plan, I would hear other opinions on it, I think that would cause some confusion in the community. We have this bond and then another bond, why are we doing two bonds? You know, it'd be difficult to sort of articulate our plan going forward. You know, it seems to me that it's better to kind of show the entire plan that we would like the community to endorse at once rather than two separate pieces. For me, it's, you know, I want the community to consider everything that we have planned for the high school, middle school campus and sort of, you know, have that referendum all at once. But I would absolutely, you know, listen to thoughts to the contrary or, you know, in addition.
So the, from the other side of the coin, I, I would think it would be more advantageous to have it separate item. The HVAC is almost a given. It'd be pretty difficult for the taxpayer payers to turn down that kind of request because it's for the health and safety of the students. And I'm not sure that, and we've been told that this is pretty much gonna be mandated eventually anyway. And now we can get the funny girlie around, so we should, you know, take advantage of that. So having that piece for the taxpayers to look at, I think would be more understanding. I think it would get more clouded when you lump everything together and then it'd be hard to sort out, which is, you know, mandatory, but it's, you know, let's think about this. Because when we come to the, the improvement bond, there's a couple of items we can present in certain ways that may make it more platable to the taxpayer with separating some items. But that's another discussion. This discussion is just on the HVAC. And I personally would encourage us to, to secure its passing. I would say more likelihood not to tell them to pass, how to vote, well, more likelihood that they would vote for it in June when it's that one standing object. And, you know, it'd be fully explained as she said, so they can see they're on the hook for, you know, two thirds of it and not three thirds. So that would be my, my reading the public and knowing, you know, how they think. I understand you're coming from the school side of it and I kind of am coming from the public side of it.
That's kind of strange because you're on the school board.
I know, but again, I, I have to see what would be beneficial as a school board member for something to be considered by the public and be, you know, acceptable to the public. And so in my opinion, it would be to put the HVAC on the June ballot, get that going. And, and then we can have a discussion on the other one. I am ready for discussion on the one after we decide on this one.
All right, other thoughts in discussion?
Well, I tend to agree that the, the June ballot would be appropriate for the HPAC project. It's, I don't really see the confusion that it could count in it because it's a very specific project with specific mandates and targeted to, to health and safety, as you said. As for the, the other bond, I'm just, with the number, I know, I know it's probably not gonna be the 60 million, but it'll be, it'll be a, a number that would be substantial. I'm just uncomfortable not have, having a, a large bond like that not on a regular election date. The November, and I, and look, I've been in construction 30 some odd years. I understand timelines and, and things, especially the mains construction season. But to have such a large, potentially a, a large number on an off month election is, just makes me uncomfortable.
Other thoughts?
And I'd like to add to that if I may.
All right, let's just see.
Unless somebody else has something.
Let's just see, go around a little bit and come back if anybody else has thoughts. Go ahead Penny.
I have been chewing over this endlessly because I see, you know, the, the value in, in both. Getting it in front of, the HVAC in front of voters in June, we have it, we know it's a thing. I also see some sort of efficiency or elegance in getting ourselves together and presenting a more comprehensive plan so that we can say, you know, we're sitting here even now talking about next summer could be this and then that. It's hard to go to folks and tell them, well, next summer will be this HVAC and maybe these other things. It depends, we'll get back to you on that. Where we could be having public meetings, where folks can come and get their questions answered on all of it. Instead of we have to have meetings for the HVAC bond and then we have to have meetings for a high school bond. It just makes more sense to me to offer opportunities for the community to come in and get a lot of questions answered at, at once. And in terms of off season, so to speak, I think it's our job to make decisions that move the goals of the district forward. And if the timing is such, we need to offer people an opportunity to get their voices heard. At an off season time, that is their, you know, job to show up and vote. So I don't think that we tank a project over that. I think we would owe a lot of communication on that front.
Other thoughts? Just giving everybody a first go around. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think pushing it out two months, it does throw off the entire timeline, especially since it's this, all this has to be done in the summer. So having it, having it, if they're saying that they have, wanna utilize both summers to get both projects done, if we choose to do both, then I think that the two months before vote is an easy thing to do. It's fresh, kids are back at school, they're using things that aren't meeting their needs and parents and students know that. So I think that it's, I, I, I'm fine with an, an earlier vote. I think that makes sense instead of commingling the chaos that election is gonna bring. So I think it keeps it clean and it presents the package all at once. And it's very clear and transparent to the voters.
All right, any other thoughts?
Yes.
All right, I'm just giving everybody a chance to go around once. Okay, second round, go ahead Fran.
Second round, well, no, I'm, I'm a first round on the second part. Let's make that clear. Okay, I think we're talking maybe a month, month and a half difference, depending on when in September you were originally thinking about. That's calling for, first of all, on the election process, that calls for staffing, the polls, getting the information out, the paperwork and all that, advertising, et cetera. You'll be meeting, we would be meeting all summer long with different meetings involving the public. Remember, we started this whole bond committee with the words transparency. And we wanted to make sure that all the public, when they get ready to vote on the issue, they will be well informed. We are gonna be providing every opportunity for them to be well informed. Making a difference of a month or two for the vote is really not that much, much of a difference. But what is the difference is that people expect to vote in June and they expect to vote in November and that's it. And anything else, it irritates them. Seriously, it's not an insult to the public, it's just that it's one more thing that has to be piled up in all the other things they have to do. Especially, you know, parents' schoolchildren and, you know, with all these events, getting everything organized. But they know come November, they're gonna be at the polls. It cuts, it cuts the cost, it cuts the frustration of, you know, the opportunity to be. I think back and I look at just the outside picture of what's happening. The public, the taxpayers provided, the school district, with the, the students, with the opportunity of having sports, but keep in mind, not all school districts have what we have. With sports, you know, advanced education, special education, clubs, you know, taxpayers willingly have paid for all of this. And they go to the polls on the voting day to pay for those. So now here comes the bond and they wanna go on to the polls on voting day to vote for the bond or turn it down, whatever their case may be. But they want the opportunity to vote on that day, that is voting day. To, to, I, I, I think that it'd be more platable for the taxpayers to vote on voting day as they do for everything else. So that's my argument and I hope it, you can understand from that point of view.
No, I, I hear that point of view. For me, you know, what I'm looking at in November is, you know, probably a repeat of the election that we had four years ago, Biden and Trump. We have, you know, flooded with, you know, millions of dollars of advertisements, you know, very heated rhetoric, all sorts of, you know, you know, just messaging coming from everywhere. What I am concerned by is, you know, we've got ourselves a generational decision to make in the communities of Granite Gloucester. You know, this is the largest spend we would make on our schools, probably since 1961, when we built the high school. What I would like us to be able to do as a community is focus on that decision and, you know, not have it be under the sort of cloud of, you know, all of this rancor, which is what I'm expecting. I want us to be able to be, you know, sort of clear about what we are voting on and make sure that we have people's attention. And so that's why, you know, something that's at the beginning of the school year, when people are focused on school, you know, it's the time when we sort of get back to school and, and think about, you know, that sort of atmosphere. We are in that mode and we're thinking, what do we want for our schools? You know, what do, do we value as a community? You know, and we have those things, you know, we're able to, you know, have some forums as part of the back to school session where people can tour our facilities and before the kids are back in there. I just think it really offers us an opportunity to make a decision as a community on the schools rather than having it be one amongst a number of checklist items. You know, okay, it's president, it's Congress, it's the bond, you know, it's, it's just one of many. And for me, you know, this is a really important decision that I don't want to be one of many.
Or overlooked for going through four sheets of voting. A lot of people just breeze through them sometimes when they've got so much to vote on.
That, that's definitely one of my concerns. You know, I don't want anybody sort of, you know, annoyed by one more question, talking about things that they're annoyed by. You know, and I also, I sort of hesitate to speculate on the psychology of the common Granite Gloucester voter. You know, what I wanna focus on is the mission of the school district, which is to prepare our kids for the next step. We've had these discussions in intense fashion now for the past two years. We have a plan that's been presented that we endorsed. I wanna make sure that that's what we're focused on. Go ahead.
I was gonna say, I, I like the idea of a September vote. August made me nervous because people are away on vacation and they're in summer mode, but I feel like September's good. You're, like you said, it gives us a summer to present the information. It gives us those back to school events, time to present information and, yeah, it's just, you're in that mindset of, it's like you're gearing up for the year, right, and, or more. So I like the September vote myself.
People we haven't heard from, Lauren, Adam. Got any thoughts? Go ahead Adam.
Do bonds traditionally pass or not pass based on voter turnout? Or is there a pattern there or are they just, more voters equal bonds pass?
I don't know. I haven't done any research along those lines. In my experience on the school board, we've only passed one bond, I think, the 2018 bond, since I've been on the board. And we had the vote right before I got on in 2014. So I don't have a ton of experience with voting and bonds in the district. The town issues them much more often. Like we just had the bond at. 2007, yeah. So it's been a while, but I, I don't know the answer to that, I guess.
And the bumping it out to a regular election. And you would know, you've had more interaction with whoever is doing it. The potentially spending $60 million for someone would make us a pretty good customer. Um, the potentially spending sixty million dollars with someone, um, would make us a pretty good customer, I would think, on their list. If they were immovable on something like that, that would caution me moving forward on certain things. If they're just stuck and that's how it is and if you, I wouldn't want to be treated like that as a customer, especially spending.
Oh, no.
Oh, no.
So if they're.
They'll do what we ask.
Yeah. I think what they're just saying is that they would be concerned about hitting that like opening September twenty-sixth if we waited longer.
I hear it.
It was more of what schedule would impact, you know, because, because early conversations were like, let's go in June. We have a, we have a June election and he was like, you're, you're out of your mind. You know, like we're, we couldn't do a good job, we couldn't get public input, we couldn't do the transparency that we're looking for. Um, and so that was just September, we could and we could make further scheduling stuff. And we could also go beyond that and you could town come back next year, you know, and then obviously just all impact schedule.
Go ahead.
Um, the, I, I get the, um, the construction schedule and my experience is that, you know, if we tried to, you know, did push it out to a November election, then if we're putting more constraints on the contractor, we're going to see higher prices. And so I'd prefer not to have that if we're trying to keep it within two construction seasons. And if we are having any of these, you know, more compressed schedules, we will see increased costs. Um, so I would prefer for, you know, lean towards the September. I do like teasing out the HVAC improvements into a separate thing, um, for, that it is, that it doesn't get into, um, tied up with the bonds and that they can, or the, um, the facility improvements at the high school, but to have those two separate.
On separate dates?
Yes, yep, yes.
Wouldn't we have separate questions on the same ballot?
There would definitely be separate questions.
Y- yes, they would, but I, I don't, I, I think as a voter that having them presented at two different times, um, would, for me, be more comfortable.
All right, uh, Cole, down at the end. Any thoughts?
I gave my opinion at the last committee meeting, but, uh.
Well, for the, you know, for the board as a whole.
Um, I see it both ways. I, I truly have no opinion on which way it should be. I, I see the benefits and pros and cons of both, both sides, so.
All right, uh, Jason, haven't heard from you.
Sure. Uh, personally, uh, in terms of the HVAC bond and the improvement bond, um, I would rather see it all together at one time, presented at one time, separate questions, whatever, but at one time. So all the costs are seen together. The, the projects are all seen together, they're discussed together, they understand what the master plan is together. What I worry about is if they're presented at two different times, we start to get an impression of, you know, we had to do the HVAC, so we did a bond for that. Then all of a sudden we do another bond for, eh, even though it's not all of a sudden, we've been working on it for quite some time, but all of a sudden we have this, another bond in September where we're asking for another large sum of money. Seems like, well, why didn't you?
Do it in June.
Yeah, why didn't you do those together? Why didn't you wrap it all up in one? Uh, I think it's more important to make sure that all of the information is presented. And I feel like to be transparent, it's best to present all of that information at the same time. Make sure everyone has the complete plan. Now, in terms of the September, November, um, I'm really torn. Uh, I, I really could go either way. I mean, I feel like the people that would benefit from those changes would want in September to get it sooner. Um, but I also hear, you know, the idea of people going out to vote in additional time. If we can't get enough people to show up at the polls at that time, I think we could get a very skewed, uh, uh, response from the public. So that worries me a little bit about doing it in September, so, but I'm, I could really go either way on that.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
I got one question. Do we or don't we want to appeal to a broad array of Granite Gloucester residents?
We do.
What time would we have an election if we want to do that?
Uh, I think we could do that in any election. I do. Um, so for instance, uh, the Cumberland affordable housing vote that they just had, right? Single issue vote, off, you know, season date. They had two-thirds of their community come out for that because it was an important issue for their community. Uh, I agree that, you know, sometimes the June municipal election, if there's, you know, no primary and not much is going on, you know, yeah, nine hundred people show up total, right? But I think if the issue is compelling, the people turn out, you know? Um, so, you know, I, am I going to argue that more people are likely to come out off in September than in November? No, I don't think that's true because I do think, you know, this presidential election, you know, and, you know, I don't want to get into reading political tea leaves because I think there's some other arguments that, you know, there is a movement on the left to boycott the election because they don't think there's an option. Right? So, uh, you know, again, I don't want to get into like, you know, psychology and that sort of thing. But, you know, if I was going by my social media feed, you know, there's a huge portion of people that are going to sit out the November election because they're angry about the choices they're being offered. Um, I don't want our vote to get caught up in that kind of discourse, you know? Like that makes me really uncomfortable. Go ahead Penny.
Um, I, I think that's an important question, um, and I care very much that people come out. Um, but also knowing that we've been working on this for multiple years now and of like two complicated options, what one keeps the interest of the district in mind in moving this forward, trying to minimize costs of what we're finding out is very expensive. Um, that just wins for me, uh, you know, in terms of what makes most sense, um, for the kids. And we'd have a huge lift in front of us, you know, to, to, to agree to go after it and then we have a lot of work to actually make it happen. Um, but I think that's its best path for service to the kids.
Based on what you said, same if I may kind of point what you said.
Yep.
Um, it feels like you, I think I hear that, you know, feel comfortable enough that the information that we've provided with the taxpayers, that by the time they go to vote, they won't be well informed, because that's what it sounds like.
Not that they.
If, if they have, if they've, if we've done our job and fully informed them of what the ballot's all about, the referendum, then there's not going to be any confusion at the polls. They already will know. My concern is that we sit here and be very comfortable as a board that we allow two communities the maximum amount of input into what we should do with the future of this district. That's my concern only. That's why I'm pushing for November election. It's, it, it'd be, um, it's not playing any odds or whether some boycotts or anything like that. This is pure opportunity, that's all it is. The greatest opportunity possible for this board to give to the taxpayers, to give them the opportunity to be able to choose what they want to do for the future's district. We would not have done our job if they're confused by that day. Whatever day it's in, if it's in September or November, we would not have done the communication that we had said that we would do. So I'm very confident that by the time they go to vote, they will have that knowledge and they won't be confused with another item on the ballot, which happens to be a presidential election. Yeah, I don't, and I'm not sure of how many other items will be on there, but by then public will know.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think that's the point of discussion, you know, and I guess why I would disagree with that is that it's not that we wouldn't have given them enough information by that point. It's that they are now encountering, you know, more arguments from more people that occupy, you know, their headspace. You only have, you know, sort of so much attention span. Uh, but I think that's the question. So, um, you know, in the interest of clarity, if we were going to have a, an HVAC vote in June, we would have to vote to move that forward tonight, just given by the timeframe, because we need to be able to get it on to the ballot. Um, so, um, while I would hear more discussion, um, I think one possible thing that could happen now is that someone could make a motion to, uh, put the HVAC, HVAC bond on the June ballot. That we could have that discussion.
I'd make the motion that we put it on the June ballot for the HVAC, um, system, systems.
I'll second.
All right, uh, we got a first and a second. We are in discussion. Um, we don't have to rehash arguments, um, but, uh, you know, uh, I would.
I'd move the question.
You're going to move the question? All right. Uh, we have the moving of the question, uh, all in favor of moving the question?
Moving the question to vote?
Uh, so moving the question would cut off discussion.
On the HVAC.
All in favor of moving the question? All right, opposed to moving the question? I'm standing for moving the question.
Well, that would be me then, because I have not raised my hand.
Wait a minute, you can take only one vote. I'm sorry.
Let's, let's have the vote. All in favor of moving the question? Opposed to moving the question? All right, discussion continues. Um, are there any further questions or discussion on the item in front of us?
So, uh, a vote here solidifies potentially doing the HVAC in June and takes off the table a vote to do a September?
Not potentially. A vote here would put our HVAC bond vote in June.
And thus separating our two items.
Because we could not possibly have it ready by June. Correct.
Under.
All right, any other questions or discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion on the table? All opposed? That's five to five. Interesting.
Motion dies.
Motion dies.
Necessarily.
All right, um, so with that done, um, haven't had a tied vote in my experience, I can't remember. Um, so.
It's encouraging.
Um, I would hear a motion on, uh, some other plan for the bonds going forward.
I move that we, um, set a election plan, an election for September twenty twenty-four to include items on the air quality bond and improvements to the high school campus.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second on that. Discussion on that?
You said, oh, which, which date did you pick for election?
September.
Oh.
With consultation with the towns of what would be appropriate, you know.
Exact date to be set in the future.
Correct.
You got that motion Maggie? All right, so the motion was, uh, that we hold a vote in September with exact date to be determined, uh, on the air quality bond and the larger facilities bond.
Who seconded it? I did.
Lauren. All right, everybody have clarity on the motion? All right, discussion on that? Any questions or thoughts they'd like to put forward while we're discussing? All right, all in favor? Okay, opposed?
They want opposed.
Want opposed?
I'm abstaining.
Abstaining? Why?
Because I don't, uh.
You got to vote, man, you're on the board. Supposed to, you can abstain if you have like an ethical concern, but, you know, it's in our ethics policy that we're going to vote if we're here.
You can abstain if you want.
We'll go against it.
All right, so we got two opposed?
I'm going to go with, I'll go with.
Okay.
I didn't have enough time.
All right, so let's do this, all, all in favor.
We starting over?
Yes.
All in favor? All right, opposed? Two, all right. All right, eight to two, it passes. Uh, so we will have, uh, agenda items on future business meetings where we iron out, uh, the exact details of the September date, but we have a path forward and appreciate all the great discussion. It's not an easy discussion and, uh, it was very well done and, uh, I'm going to move forward with the agenda. Okay, uh, from one large discussion to another, next up is a budget discussion, which is a follow-on from our most recent workshop where Diane is going to present some things.
Paper.
Oh, wow, we have hard copies. Excited.
It's not yellow though.
All right, you ready to rock and roll there Diane?
All right. When we let, met last week, we're at a nine point four two percent increase. We have gone and made some, um, reductions to the budget. We had, um, as you'll work through your agenda tonight, that we had made, um, had some tentative placeholders for the collective bargaining agreement. I've gone in and made some adjustments that had some savings in the budget. So I'm going to go down the list that you have in front of you, so that had some savings in it. We had, we reduced some transportation subs, tuition, that, these are all based on going back and talking to, um, individuals and looking at past history, what we are now doing since COVID, whether we're doing more things on Zoom, we're not traveling as much, whether we, um, are using things in a different manner, that we were able to take additional reductions. So tuition, we were able to save nineteen thousand dollars, professional development, a reduction of eight thousand dollars, repairs and maintenance throughout the district of fourteen five, capital discussed, um, to do some paving through Esser of a hundred and fifty thousand. Staff travel in district, we had about fifty dollars in a many lines that staff were traveling between district, between buildings. We got rid of all of that. They're not doing as much traveling between buildings. That saved us a thousand dollars. Um, staff traveling for PD, once again, we're doing it through Zoom, so they're not traveling up to Augusta or to other districts. Um, a little over fourth, forty-five hundred dollars. Audio visual will, two hundred dollars increase, we'll buy it this year. Um, equipment, various pieces of equipment that people were buying, they're going to try and, um, do that with funds that are still available this year. Um, a little over eighty-four hundred savings. And then Russell Memorial School use, um, logos, which they are no longer going to use for next year. So that's an eighteen thousand dollar savings. So that was three hundred thousand dollars, brought us down to an eight point four six percent increase. So those reductions were made. We felt that that wasn't enough, so the administrative team met and these were additional reductions that we are still going to take. Um, a gateway teacher at the middle school, we felt that there was some, a little bit of redundancy for next year. So that would be a savings of eighty-four thousand dollars. There's still some concern that the following year, that teacher may still need to be brought back. Um, so that's questionable, but we think that it can be managed next year. Um, still concern about the assistant special ed director and dropping that to point five. So they're, um, looking at taking the site services that we have budgeted for, but it has been unfilled and feel that she can still do it with just one person this year and there's still some money in local entitlement if she has to do some contracted services. So we are taking that position out and, and keeping a full-time assistant special ed director in the budget. So that was actually an additional savings instead of having a halftime, um, reduction in the assistant special ed director. We reduce the ask for the, um, additional secretarial time at the high school for the attendance secretary. We're delaying the bus purchase since we purchased two. Our most recent buses are twenty-twenty fours, so we're not gonna buy an additional bus. But it does keep in a van lease for a new van next year. We are reducing or eliminate, not adding in the two kindergarten ed tech threes that are currently in Essar. We are not adding them into the budget next year. Technology, we are reducing the technology refresh by using some of the twenty-three, twenty-four funds that he has left over this year and some E-rate funding. So we're still doing the technology refresh, but we'll be able to save a hundred and thirteen thousand. Books, we're using some literacy money that she, grant that she got and some money from this year that I'll be requesting a transfer of funds from finance next week. Outside placements, we'll be able to reduce that twenty-five thousand with a placeholder that's in local entitlement. Student travel for middle school and high school, there's about nine thousand in reductions just because of use that we see. So that brought us down to a six point six percent budget increase. Then the bad news. We did get our rates for health insurance, and the max was eleven point five percent, and we have eleven point two percent increase in health insurance.
Eleven point two?
And we had budgeted ten percent. So my estimation is it's gonna be about a sixty thousand dollar increase in our budget. Um, I have not been able to calculate that through our budget at this time. I will be able to do it next week, but I haven't done it. So, um, estimating it at sixty thousand dollars, that puts our budget at about six point eight, six percent right now. With the Essar funds that we're estimating to have at the end of June of about a hundred and ninety-five thousand, recommending that we do the paving of the parking lots at Russell Memorial and Dunn, which is what we had in the original grant request due to COVID and parents driving. We think that that's an important thing to continue to do and use those funds, because they're a one-off. They're not something that we will need to do again and put it back in the budget. Um, and maybe some ESY, which is the extended school year for special ed. So, and then some things that we still haven't heard about is dental insurance, which is minor, it's not a huge amount in the budget. And then architect fees. So that's where we are right now. Still a work in progress. Um, we have a big finance meeting next week that will talk about revenues and, um, hopefully have an additional, um, recommendation to the full budget, to the full board.
Thank you, Diane. I think this, uh.
Cuts and reductions as well.
Thank you, Diane. Uh, I think this really reflects well, uh, the discussion that we had, uh, at the workshop. I wanna thank all the administrators, uh, for really diving into every line item and, and finding what we can. You know, appreciate the creativity and, uh, you know, it's a more palatable number, that's for sure. Uh, that's a considerable, uh, reduction. Health insurance is really disappointing. I kinda have my fingers crossed for like seven percent, you know?
And there were a lot of, um, reductions in the plan as well.
Yeah.
The plan took a big hit.
And the plan is worse.
I mean, it's a, it's a Cadillac plan. Um, I think the MEA has to take a hard look at what they're offering and the benefit and.
All right, uh, floor is open for response to what we've got in front of us. Any direction to the finance committee, which is going to prepare our, uh, official proposal, uh, at their next meeting?
I mean, some of the things that this was able to maintain is the, um, the permanent subs in the class, in the classrooms, which I think was really important to administrators.
Full-time social workers.
The social workers. So those things were really, you know, the high priority. So those are why we looked at some of the other things and trying to balance the capital budget and getting some of that other work done and looking at what we have in capital budget this year and things like that to make sure we can really make use of what the funds are we have in this year to, um, maximize that and still have what we need for next year with the technology and everything else.
Go ahead, Cole.
Just a question, what's the logos for the Russell Memorial, uh, in Memorial?
That's, that's a training that they do for, yeah, if you don't mind.
Yeah, not actual like logos for this.
No, okay.
It's called logos, it's like, uh.
They're a consultant.
Yeah, they're, yeah. It's a training teacher consultant.
Or a consultant.
Yeah.
Does this include pre-K, um?
Yes, it does. It still has the pre-K refreshing there.
And, um, it still has the, uh, um, business manager?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead, Cole. Uh, go ahead, I just, Jim, I'm sorry.
Yeah, do you have a sense of what the net FTE is? Increase from this year to last year?
Um, I did not go back and look at that again from last week.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead, Cole.
I guess we didn't really hear about it. I, I know the question got asked, uh, the high school, uh, attendance secretary, additional hours, I think it was, correct? I know there's a lot of concern on that, obviously, uh, because of attendance. Is that something that we can afford to lose? I guess my next question is, is I know what the, the middle schools, there's still three secretaries there? There's three secretaries at the middle school, Mike?
Two. Yes, there are three secretaries. They're not all full-time.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they're not all full-time, as well as the high school's not all full-time. Yes, I think they, um, they prioritize their list. So I really feel like what you're seeing on here is because they prioritize the permanent subs and the social workers and felt like this is, they made it to the list because they wanted the other things.
Right, but it might be that the.
And how they use the secretaries.
It might be that the finance committee, you know, has seen that attendance is one of our big goals and that, you know, chronic absenteeism is something that we've heard a lot about and that sixty-five hundred might be well-spent.
And we, and we can get more information from the high school as well. If that's something that's concerned, we certainly can ask her to provide a little bit more understanding of how she's gonna address that.
Because we do have one more, uh.
Workshop.
Workshop where we'll vote at the end. So we, we.
Yep.
Finance committee can ask for more information at the beginning of that as well.
Yep.
But I think that, you know, I think those are the types of thing. This is, you know, them getting as low as they feel comfortable and meeting our mission. And I think, you know, we've now seen the high. We've now seen, you know, the, the pretty deep cut. And it's the finance committee and our job to decide where we want it to be.
For the, um, finance committee meeting, if, um, um, we could have the, um, I don't have a clear picture on the staffing, like how many assistants you have and how many does the superintendent have? You know, allow you to help you at your job? I'm not sure.
The administrative office?
In the office.
The central office?
Yeah, central office, how that breaks out. Like you have a certain amount of assistance for each department and superintendent has. And so.
We, not really.
I might be able on that.
No.
I can share that with you pretty easily.
Yeah, well.
We don't have staff?
You can see the org chart when we have the finance committee. If you can find some fluff in there, it'll be impressive.
We don't have a staff? You don't have a staff at the office? Just you and the superintendent and?
No, I, no, we have, we have a HR and AP.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. Yeah, I can give you that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, no problem.
Other questions or thoughts on this? All right, like I said, great work from the administrative staff to, to, to give us a lot to think about. Um, you know, I think, based on the discussion at the end of the last workshop, this is the ballpark we asked for and you guys delivered. So, um, it's, uh, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I did wanna make a couple of comments.
Yes, please.
First, you know, to the administrators, I know what you brought us was not anything that was, you know, really a nice to have. It was all things that you really felt like you needed. So to cut this list down like this, I know it was painful, so I wanna thank you for going through and doing that work. But also, I'd like to make a statement to the finance committee. And, you know, I, I know during our last discussion, we talked about trying to hit a, you know, we'd like to hit a particular number. But I'd like the finance committee to really take a look at this and, you know, keep your number in mind. But keep in mind that some of these things, you know, there was nothing that was asked that wasn't needed. And really do some thinking on these items and the impact that it will have on our students when making the decisions. And don't hold to the lowest possible number in the budget just because that's what we wanna hit, you know? Do some serious thinking and, and really think about the impact to the students before making the final decision.
Thank you, Jay. I'm happy that the health insurance went up so that the number wasn't six point six six, because that would've made me uncomfortable. I'm just kidding. Without, if there's not further discussion, we'll move on with the agenda? Any objections to that?
Thanks, Diane.
All right, thank you, Diane. Okay, let's consider an expenditure on a middle school English language arts program.
Sorry. I was waiting for the motion, sorry.
Well, let's see what we're motioning on first.
Jim, do you want me to talk or do you wanna?
All right, please talk.
Okay. So we have a motion in front of you for, um, an expenditure on grades five through eight ELA materials. Um, this is something we do periodically in all of our content areas at all of our schools. Usually see a couple come forward every year. This year, it's, um, five through eight ELA. You can see in the attachments, we have, um, laid out the process. That's a process that was, um, approved by the board a number of years ago. We've been using, it's worked well for us. Um, so you can see some details about that process. It's now, um, in front of you as an approval of, to allow us to expend that amount of money on an ELA program for the middle school. One change from the attachments that you've received pursuant to the conversation Diane and I, Diane had just had, she and I have been doing a ton of moving stuff around over the last couple of days, thinking about how we can maximize different sources of funding. So the total amount for this, um, investment is the one hundred nine thousand, three hundred twenty and eighty-two cents. How much of that comes out of Essar versus other grants versus local, this year versus local next year? May not look exactly as this document is. That's still in process as we work through the finance. What we're asking is that you, um, commit to allow us to spend that hundred and nine thousand dollars on this program and that we will work that in as part of the budget process, exactly where the, those funding sources come from. Does that make sense?
All right, uh, Jim, do you wanna, uh, add on to that at all?
No.
All right. I would, uh, hear a motion to approve a hundred nine thousand, three hundred twenty dollars and eighty-two cents for the purchase of middle school English language arts as presented in materials to the board.
Salute.
All right, uh, further discussion on that? Go ahead, Fran.
The last time you came before us, it was just for grades seven and eight, correct? No, it was, the last chat included grade five as well? No, I know on this one, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I'm talking about the last, last meeting we had.
At the curriculum meeting?
No, at, at, when you were here the last time. I thought it was seven and eight I referred to. And it was like, but maybe not.
At the last business meeting?
But I didn't recall seeing grade five. So this is middle school and only, basically, okay? Um, does, this program would, I asked that at the last meeting, would it include other grades too in the future or just this particular?
Just this particular program is only for grades five through eight. They don't make products for other grades.
Okay, and is this a hundred and nine already in the budget? Or will be added to the budget and paid for out of some of the Ursa funds? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, so that's what Diane and I are working on. So we put a big chunk of books and materials into the budget. It's a combination of a couple of different purchases, um, including this, um, ELA. Um, there was some Dunn School math, um, the five through eight math at the middle school, uh, sorry, that's not this year, sorry. Getting myself confused. I've been working a lot in next year's stuff, so I'm having a hard time with this year right now. Um, so part of what Diane and I have been doing is looking at what can we pay out of this year? What can we play out of Essar? What can go into next year? So we had an amount put aside that would cover all of it in next year and that original number, you got that nine percent. So part of the work we've been doing is moving that around. That was part of getting down to the six percent, was moving out what we thought we can move out from next year. Um, and we're gonna continue to work that as we work through the budget process. Okay.
Go ahead, Jim.
Uh, just correct me if I'm wrong. My recollection is, is, uh, this a hundred and nine thousand dollars is, covers us for five years. So for the next four years, it's a goose egg, right?
Correct.
Okay, I'll make sure that everybody knows.
Correct, yeah, thank you.
I would also add that we had a, um, a lot of enthusiasm, enthusiasm at the curriculum meeting, um, from, um, some of the middle school staff who had helped, you know, participate in, in picking these and that there was a, like, huge amount of buy-in on, agreement on, which is unusual and that it's hard to find things that target five through seven is, five through eight is a very unusual grade group to be looking at. And this met that need, so that was.
Thank you.
Nice.
All right, other thoughts or questions? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? All right, thank you. Shanda. But I suspect you're going to be hovering around. We have, uh, the next three budget items are approvals of, um, visual arts, world language and mathematics curriculum. Uh, would anybody oppose us grouping these, uh, three items?
No objection.
So, uh, I would hear a motion to approve the visual and performing arts curriculum, the world languages curriculum and the mathematics curriculum as presented in materials to the board.
Salute.
Second.
All right. Entering discussion, uh, does the curriculum chair wanna comment on the process or let us know anything?
No, I have no comment.
All right. Shanda, do you need any information that we feel that we should have here?
Maybe just as background, because we haven't done this for a long time.
Go ahead.
And there are lots of folks who haven't done this. Um, it is the purview of the board to approve the curriculum that is taught in our schools. And as part of that, we do try to go through content areas on a regular basis. It's just been a little while since we have been able to do that. So we're really excited to be back on track with that. There is a process that we follow. Again, much like when we're picking materials, we go through a very extensive process when we're making these decisions about what we should teach and what we should deprioritize with kids. In the document, I know there are a lot of documents that you were given as part of this and it was very confusing. In those documents, you have a report on the content area. And this is what you'll see anytime we bring forward a curriculum. You'll see a report kind of of the status of that content area. Oftentimes, particularly as you get to the bottom about areas of need, those are things you can probably anticipate over the next four or five years to see making its way into budget requests over time, generally speaking. Um, you also then have a report out on the process, exactly what happened and when it happened and who did it. Um, and then the third piece is the actual curriculum. It's the one that has draft across it. That's the part you are voting on. Um, within that curriculum guide, there are pieces that are the purview of the board and pieces that aren't. But we do try to package them together so that people have a full picture of what we're doing. It's the content standards piece that is the purview of the board. If we were to want to change that at any grade level moving forward, we would have to come back to you for a change in that. The pieces that move around a little bit are the curriculum and materials, much like this discussion tonight. As we adopt new ones, we would update that. Same with the assessment calendar. The assessments we go through curriculum, we talk about, but it's not something the board votes on. As assessments get changed around, we would update that in real time.
And the curriculum committee went through all of these documents, reviewed them and has recommended all three of them[1767.38] has recommended all three of them be approved by the board as a whole as part of their Other thoughts and discussion? Alright, seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Alright, thank you very much and thanks to the work of the curriculum committee, because I know it was a lot of meetings to get that over the line. So thank you very much, Shanda and the curriculum committee. Okay, let's get into the policy portion of our budget. First up is policy IKF graduation requirements. I would consider a motion to pass policy IKF graduation requirements.
So moved.
Second.
Alright. Policy chair, do you want to introduce what we're doing here?
Yes, so the policy IKF graduation requirements is clearly not a new policy, but just updating with enough significant changes that we're bringing it forward. So some of it was pretty minor, just formatting, moving things around so that they, it reads better. There are some things that are coming off that were specific to students graduating at a particular date. We have now passed through all of those, so the policy would just apply to everyone who's already at school moving on. There is some flexibility built into the health and PE requirements. Overall, that does not change, but it allows students to consider doing a little more health class versus a little more physical education with their preferences, while still requiring the two credits combined. Some language clarifications and then the sections on special education and career were in response to law changes. And you'll, you will have it redlined in the packet.
Alright, any questions or thoughts on any of that? Alright, seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, let's get into IKF-R. I would hear a motion to pass policy IKF-R as presented.
So moved.
What is happening?
Keeping everyone awake. So similarly, updating the procedures that go along with the requirements. There was some updating in the terminology, adding honors to our diploma endorsement. This is feedback from colleges saying, you know, we, we would understand what this is better if you would add the word honors to it, because essentially that's what it, what it is, requiring a significant amount of rigor in addition to graduation requirements. So that has been added. Clearing up again, just some terminology pieces, technology requirements, making them related classes to give some flexibility. And then a lot of discussion around the hours required for additional learning. We have had very few students go after these endorsements. One of the reasons given was a fear about the hours required. In practice, these students are easily completing the hours in the extra areas, but looking at that number of 50 hours was really overwhelming. It also starts counting in the junior year, so a kid who's been doing these sort of activities all along, you know, those previous hours don't count. So the recommendation from admin was to drop it to a minimum of 25 hours, understanding that they only got to accumulate, count hours from junior year forward. So those were the changes to that.
Thoughts or questions on that? Alright, seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Okay. And let's wrap this up with a motion to pass policy IKER procedure for earning those alternative credits. I actually have another policy up to that, but yeah.
I move we accept IKER procedure, earning alternative credits as presented in the materials.
Second.
So an additional piece, procedures, credit around earning credits at the high school, remove section specific to the, again, to a graduated class that have already exited, differentiating the multiple pathways throughout the state instead of just local pathways. These, we have some coordinators that aren't always used that have been removed and removing some sign-off requirements that were creating barriers to students. So the principal will apply rigor and oversight to the process without the additional sign-offs.
Questions or thoughts about that? Alright, seeing none, all in favor? Okay, opposed? Alright. And finally, I'm sorry to have potentially not given this its due, I would hear a motion to approve JLF reporting child abuse with MSMA JLF reporting child abuse. I don't know what that means, I'm sorry. The agenda had an extra word in it. I would hear a motion to replace our current JLF reporting child abuse with the proposed MSMA draft JLF reporting child abuse.
So moved, second. So the background on this one, very straightforward. The MSMA sample is just updated to reflect current laws. There's no, you know, substantial changes from what we had before in terms of the intent. This is a very set mandated reporter, you know, process when abuse is suspected. So it was our recommendation to stay with the legally presented, you know, prepared
Lots of questions about that? Alright, seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Alright, moving down into committee reports, let's start with the facilities committee which met earlier today.
Thank you, Sam. The first item was old business, discussing the bonds, which have already been discussed in quite depth already this evening, so I won't reiterate that. The second agenda was year end of expenditures. That took up the rest of the meeting with the report given by administrative staff. We're looking at about $250,000 remaining in 2024 funds for capital projects, $195,000 remaining for ESER and 150 looking forward to 2025 that's currently in the budget, leaving us at $600,000 for spend. As discussed, our priority is going to be used, some of that ESER for paving that Diane had mentioned for Russell Memorial and Dunn, that is a priority. Moving $100,000 to our capital reserve fund, which is always a great thing to do, leaving us $300,000 remaining. And the list that was given was replacing the front porch and ramp at central office, memorial school cooler, refrigerator replacement, Dunn tile replacement, middle school locker room upgrades, outdoor area replacement, the outdoor, I can't remember what with that, I didn't take the best notes on the outdoor, oh, the outside doors, that was what that was, okay, I'm putting S on that. Upgrading some classroom sinks, doing some roof work per recommendation, siding, fixing some siding issues at Dunn, preparing the snowplow pad, middle school ventilation and the network closet, transportation area paving repairs for the potholes and upgrading the bathroom stalls in the high school wing, which is a great list. That was good to see that we're going to be able to tackle so many things with that small amount of money, so I think that was excellent. And the last little piece that we approved that we don't need to vote on, we okayed the middle school, painting a mural of the GNG logo in the gym and painting a tree outside of the library that they will use for seasons coming. And that was the course.
Alright, thank you Misty, any questions about any of that? Alright, thank you. Finance committee, Gary is not here. And last time finance met was before both of the budget workshops that we've had recently and we prepared for the budget workshop, so I don't think there's anything important to report there. Personnel committee?
Thank you. Personnel committee met on March 13th, I think it was. We tried adding an item to the agenda to discuss the hiring process, but we did not get to that, so we didn't actually add that to the agenda. So the first order of business was talking about the organizational structures again. Superintendent King gave an update on changes to the proposed organizational structure, long-term changes, so these are long-term changes, nothing that's happening right now. These are things that we're looking at long-term in the future, possibly making changes within the district. Then the second item was the transportation supervisor job description, we had discussion around that, recommended that the board adopt the transportation supervisor job description. Let's see. After that, we entered into executive session to discuss support staff contract negotiations. And we will be having an executive session this evening to have a discussion around that same item with an option, with a, an action to vote on that following that. Then, again, like we talked about, the hiring process for the director of operations discussion, we did not get to that during that meeting, so that was it for that meeting.
Did you get my text earlier today?
Oh, yeah, actually I did, thank you. I do have an update on that too. Alright, so we're a little bit behind on our schedule for the superintendent evaluation, end of the year evaluation. So we are looking at a little bit of a truncated schedule for that. I spoke to a few people and what we're going to do is by tomorrow, I'd like to get the administrative staff surveys out for the 360 view, give them next week to get those back. Superintendent King will do his self-evaluation, hopefully next week, get that to us. And then as soon as those are ready, I will open up the forms for us to fill out our evaluations. And if we all make a very good effort to get those done, we can have these ready for discussion on the April 24th meeting, which is what we originally had, will be back on our schedule at that point. And then have a follow-up meeting with Dr. King, the following meeting, which is May 3rd, I think?
May 1st, I think.
May 1st, okay, yep, May 1st. And that'll get us back on track.
Excellent, any questions about that schedule? Just watch your email boxes over the next few days, just want to make sure we don't get, we just got a little off schedule from our plan, I want to make sure we get back on it. Alright, go ahead Cricket.
Yeah, well, we've been very busy. We had actually two meetings since our last regular business meeting, March 13th was a very large meeting where we discussed, we moved forward many of the things we voted on today, the middle school language arts program, the, we had a report on the Dunn School, the language program at the Dunn, English language arts instruction at the Dunn School, then the world language curriculum, we brought that, we voted to bring that before the board and the curriculum, the math curriculum recommendations for the board, we voted to send that to the board, which we voted on. And then the following week, on the 20th, we had a little bit smaller meeting where we kind of updated the curriculum review calendar and then the, it's old business and the new business was the visual performing arts curriculum recommendations to the board, which we voted on earlier this evening. Lastly, we did hear a report and give feedback on elementary and secondary education act titled grant funding, so that was, that was the last item we discussed.
Great.
Didn't require a vote or bring anything to the, to the board.
Any questions or thoughts on that? Alright, seeing none, policy.
Alright, largely, our meeting was taken up with discussing all the material we've already voted on tonight, a couple of minor things reviewed just based on its age, the IHBG homeschooling policy, I've made no changes to it, it's useful and effective. And then similarly with the JLFE, which is a form that goes along with the child abuse policy, we've updated, basically no real changes to that, so that didn't require a vote, but, and that was the total of our discussion.
Thank you very much. Alright, school board chair report. So I don't know if it's big news or anything, but I do want to say that nomination papers are available right now and I just want to let everybody know that I am choosing not to run again for next year and I would encourage anybody watching to investigate getting out their nomination papers and running for school board. My seat at least will be open, what everybody else is doing is up to them, but I just want to encourage people, I have had an amazing and really fulfilling experience on the school board and I hope other people will see it as the opportunity to serve their community that it is and take out papers. You have until April 12th to get them back into your respective town offices and all you got to do is get 25 registered voters in your town to say that they would like you to be on the school board by signing your nomination paper. Actually, they don't even have to want you to get them, they can then vote, vote against you later, but all they have to do is say they want you to be on the ballot. So I would just encourage everybody, you know, the more people that we have running for these seats and the more discussion we have about what we want to have happen in the future of our district, the better. And if I can ever be of service in helping you understand what the role is and what the job entails, please reach out to me directly. And then the only other thing is I want to thank our grounds and facility staff, it has been a very challenging weather environment and getting all the kids out, I know we had kids outside on the fields earlier this week, they're going to be disappointed with the big snow tomorrow, but I just want to thank the grounds crew just for any opportunity the kids can have to get out and running around in such a challenging weather environment is really appreciated, so thank you for all your hard work. Superintendent report.
Okay, thank you. There are new hires, Nicole Hamilton, van driver, transportation department, no resignations and no transfers.
Nice.
Spectacular.
Nice. And so there are the new school board member onboarding questionnaire. So Adam Kopp had spoken to me earlier about the onboarding, I guess, or the initiation of new board members and how that process works and there really is no defined process and usually the process is someone gets elected or appointed and they meet with me for an hour and they meet with the chair for an hour and then they're good to go. And so Adam's suggested some ideas of how to maybe make that a better, more informative process and I think it's timely. We've had many, many board members that did three, four, five and six terms and so they're really, that was sort of an afterthought, but now, in the last year or two, we've had a lot of new board members. And so I created a survey and I, it was sent to you at, let me see.
631.
Yep, it came from Christopher Galasso. Yeah, and there's a link to the survey. And you don't have to do it tonight, but you can open the survey to see what it looks So it's pretty self-explanatory and it asks you, it just asks you some basic questions and you get to rate certain items that you think might make good training for a new board member. And, and then there's three open-ended questions where you can give your opinion. One of the open-ended questions is for people in their first term only and the other open-ended question is for veteran board members and then the last one is for all of you. So I think this is a really good exercise for us because it is a lot and I think maybe if you were elected to the school board 20 years ago, it may not have been as daunting as it is today. I think, I think, you know, policies used to be a paragraph, now they're 36 pages with a how-to list, so I think the job is more complex. how-to list, so I think the job is more complicated. So, I put a deadline of April 10th. It, it, it might take you 10 or 15 minutes to do this and if you can get it done by April 10th, I can bring the results to the Personnel Committee meeting and they can take a look at it and decide what we wanna do with it. And so that's that. And then I have two other items. The, um, I just re-sent you. Yeah.
Just close that email.
No, you don't need to look at your email right now.
Yeah, it's the spring events for this year. It's, um, concert season, play season, graduation season, NHS season, all those different programs. And, uh, you're welcome to go to any of them, but it's more for your edification of how much actually goes on in the school district with the kids, with their different activities and, um, so that's that. And then on what I find to be an exciting note, um, the Transportation Committee that met earlier this year to talk about, uh, recruiting bus drivers, making the transportation system a little more effective, uh, finding better ways or, uh, getting kids to school. And, uh, what, uh, we've done is, uh, we have a group of students who have worked with Mr., um, Lammerow, who has created a 15-second advertisement, which is, it's not, it's 98% ready, so I can't quite share it with you, but I will share it with you maybe later this week or early next week. It's 15 seconds, it's animated, uh, it's excellent, um, created by the kids. And it will appear at preview time at Smithy's Theater in Wyndham, Flagship Cinema in Auburn, and Flagship Cinema in, uh, Falmouth. And it will be advertisements for, uh, bus drivers to come work for us. And if that, uh, seems to bear fruit, we'll expand it to other personnel.
Awesome.
And it is entertaining.
I can't wait to see it. Uh, thank you Craig, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Lammerow and the students, and thank you Adam for spearheading, uh, the Onboarding Questionnaire. Uh, I do think, uh, having a nice onboarding packet for new board members can really be helpful for us, so I'm really glad that's working. Okay, uh, that is the substance of our agenda. We have an Executive Session to close things out. As a reminder, we will be coming back from this Executive Session as there is action that's going to follow. But, for the time being, could I hear a motion to go into Executive Session?
I move.
You can do it, that's fine.
I move that we go into Executive Session as per, uh, 1 MRSA 4056E to discuss the Labor Contract Proposal with the Support Personnel Association with a vote to follow.
Taken.
Any discussion on that? Alright, all in favor? opposed? Alright, I'll give, uh, just a couple of minutes for people, jackets on and clear out and then we will begin discussion. Remember that we cannot talk about anything, except for the subject of that motion.